I have number four on your agenda this evening. We're going to remove that this evening due to the fact that electronically we did not receive the minutes, so we'll put them all on the meeting. First meeting in January, which would be January 13, 2020. This time we'll accept a receipt from petitions from the audience this evening. Ms. Berry, do you have anyone else?
Yes, we have three this evening. Bonnie Gabbard.
Good evening, I'm Bonnie Gabbard. I go to 1221 Valley Drive, Virginia. I just have a couple of things. It seems that lately, everything has been done in a hurry-up way. When the water issue to Crooked Run came up, the then interim mayor, Mr. Tedrick, said that he didn't want to wait three months for the town to do a study. He wanted it done right now. TAF fees came up. It was suggested they go back to a work session for further study. Well, that didn't sit too well either. They wanted that done right now. It seems that you all are not taking the time to research the ramifications of what the decisions that you want to make, how it's going to affect the budget, the staff, and the town, and the citizens of the town. In the Town Code, Chapter 134, 2B, states that the town will provide the TAF fees. They will take it from the main sewer to the property. But now you all still want to lower the amount that they're going to be charged for it. I don't see how you can justify that, because the town has not been doing it so far, from what I understand. And now the town's going to have to do it, and you want to lower what it's going to cost. I think that's just insane. I think that you all should at least do a study on this before you decide to do that. And I don't think that you should hire a consultant to do the study. I'm sure that you have enough staff here that can tell you what they would charge, the time and materials to do that. The other issue I have is in the Town Code, Chapter 5, Section 25, and please forgive me if I am reading this wrong, because I'm not an attorney. I'm just reading it as a layperson, so... It says that the town manager will post a bond to the town in the amount of no less than $500,000. The town...$500,000, yeah. The Town Charter, Chapter 7, Section 49, also states that the town treasurer will post a bond before entering his duties. As of today, from what I understand, there has not been a bond for either of these positions. The Town Code, Chapter 4, Section 28, also states that the town manager will be the town treasurer. So since no bond have been put up, I'd like to know why we're paying a town manager to be a town manager before the Town Code has been...before he's put up a bond. Also, the Town Code, Chapter 180, 185.15, says that the BRT will post a bond. I don't know if that's been done either. A bond gives us an added layer of protection against fraud, and anybody that handles any money should have one. And it states it in the Town Code. It states it in the charter. We may not be able to recoup all of the money that would be fraught from fraud if someone decided to do that, or hopefully we would never have to have that. But we may not be able to recoup all the money, but we would be able to recoup some of it if we had a bond. Is my time up?
Yes.
Aw, man.
You get some people on this.
I can keep speaking, thank you. You might not want me to, but you know what else I've got to say.
Not you, though.
Now you're talking about creating mediate for the town. I don't understand how you all can logically even consider something like this when you're not in compliance with the Town Code or the Town Charter. As a citizen, I'm really concerned about these bond issues. I think it could be stated that you all are bordering on neglect of duty by not, you know, following through with the Town Code. And I don't know about that, you know? It just doesn't look real good, and it kind of sounds to me like that's what happened with the county board supervisors. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gabbard.
Paul Gabbard.
Good evening, Paul Gabbard, 1221 Valley Drive. First welcome, Mr. Mayor, to your seat. The TAF fees, my wife got into, it's the same thing. Mr. Holloway, I can understand you wanting the town to take them over. As a matter of fact, I saw that in the Town Code, that the town should be doing that. But you're a councilman for us, so yes, the town can take the work in, but you shouldn't ask to take a cut in the pay. You're here for us, and so we don't want to be hurt by lowering fees just so you can lower them. And yours and Mr. Tedrick's point on that was the high fees keep residential people from coming in here and building. That's not why. Nobody...everybody comes in here. If they want to come in here and build, they'll come in here and build. The fees have nothing to do with it. The second thing I have is the afternoon tear, the dag on things down, get rid of it, put a park in, put a picture of the afternoon and the history on it in a glass frame, put it in the ground, and get it over with. I put a post on...my many posts on Facebook about the EDA, forming an EDA, so I'm going to read that. The county EDA has installed it. It'll never catch up. It'll go bankrupt. That's a guarantee. The chances of Warren County going bankrupt is a very good possibility. We all know that. There's too much money being put out there towards the EDA, toward the lawsuits. Now the county's got a $20 million lawsuit against one of the defendants that is being sued by the EDA. I hope that doesn't happen, but it's a good possibility. I don't think that our town manager, and even you, the council, can see the actual downfall on the town that this will make. You have to look at the future. You can't just say, "Yeah, an EDA for the town is a good idea." Yeah, let's do it. It's a good idea. There's too much money, too much money, too much risk at stake to do this at this time. There's just too much turmoil. We don't know what money the town's going to get in. We don't know anything that's going to happen, but yet you're talking about forming an EDA. I don't think it's a very good idea. I would like to talk just a little bit about Mr. Tedrick. He brought the law firm of DiAmonte, and I think that's the name, DiAmonte Inn, for the legal fees to represent the town for the legal fees of the EDA. This law firm is in the same building as his firm, 1839 Capital LLC in Alexandria. I don't see where this couldn't be a conflict of interest. It's just...he knows they're in the same building, and yet he brings their name to you all, and you all pass it. That is a conflict of interest. 1839 Capital LLC. Mr. Tedrick says the company has yet to generate income. The lack of income is why he did not add it to his financial disclosure for becoming mayor. I would like to read one more thing to you, if I can bring it up real quickly. If my phone will work, though. Now, he says it hasn't generated any income. This is right from 1839 Capital's website. It is a private equity firm whose purpose is to invest wisely for its senior management team and its investors, create value and actively participate in the management of the entity in which it invests. Its track record of success includes large-scale, complex commercial real estate developments in Europe and high-growth mid-cap companies here in the United States. Its senior management team leverages its global network reputation, experience, and deep industry knowledge to identify target, execute on specific investments, and achieve greater returns. Doesn't sound like a company that hasn't received any money to make. I also researched 1839 as far as the address in Alexandria. The only place I found that 1839 had an address, a mailing address, was...if you'll give me just a second, on the U.S. Security and Exchange Commission filing. That's the only place I found an address. When I typed in 604 Cameron Street, Alex, 604 Cameron Street, nowhere could I find 1839 Capital as a past tenant or a new tenant. All other businesses were listed except for 1839 Capital. Mr. Tedrick smiling and shaking his head like, "Get the hell out of town, Mr. Gabbard." And also, I have approached Mr. Tedrick a couple of times after meetings to ask him about his LLC that he has, that you all put in his contract. You hired an individual to be town manager, but gave him the possibility of turning over to an LLC. I don't see how you can hire an individual and an LLC at the same time. I've asked Mr. Tedrick a couple of times about this after meetings. He has gotten irate at me, jumped in my face, and been nasty as hell. Right now, I would ask Mr. Tedrick if he would tell us the name of the LLC, so it'll be on video. No, I didn't think so. I'll be requesting that from you, Mr. Mayor, the name of the LLC that Mr. Tedrick is talking about. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gabbard. Anyone else?
Linda Allen.
Good evening, Mayor Tewol, members of council, and Sam. I'm Linda Allen from 115 Nassi Street in New Front Row. Our heart of all trust, Anne Rose, is retiring at the end of December without wanting any fanfare for the occasion. However, she warrants recognition to publicly for the years she has contributed to the beauty of Front Row. With the last name of Rose, I cannot resist using the colors of roses as a way to describe her a little bit. So here we go. If you find orange, a high-energy color, Anne is the lady who went to work, to work, 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 with serious attention to every flower and every planting of the town. Salmon roses represent enthusiasm, and with the kind of intense attention she paid to the plants, she has been an enthusiastic worker. Cream roses may be equated with thoughtfulness. See the plantings and how they vary in heights, shapes, and shades of color. Clearly, she is thoughtful in design for the maximum effect of our senses, and yet she also paid attention to the cost. In the seasons that I spent in the stores and on the street for a variety of reasons, the flowers were admired and appreciated more often than other topics. When I first noticed her working on the plantings, she was deeply engrossed with the watering and weeding, and yet she sensed to me as a nice person, and I would wish that we would converse and somehow she could make me as smart as she was about all the characteristics of flowers, already mentioned, about hardiness and how many hours of direct sunlight and indirect sunlight. She was indeed very pleasant to approach with questions about the names of plants and where she got them. She's had a very good nature over the years, sharing knowledge, gracious in manner, and for those features, pink roses are a symbol. Add some white roses for her charm and patience, her smile and laughter. For giving joyful moments to many visitors and residents, the yellow rose is representative, with her talent, confidence, conscientiousness to creatively develop plantings that were lush for their abundance, arrangement, and durability, her green roses. And while pet roses are given the role of a thank you, any single rose sent can convey the same message. There are so many reasons to thank Anne for her work. The bouquet would be large, handful of pet roses. Thank you, whoever, whenever, for hiring Anne Rose, who has been a delight to know and who has given so much pleasure with her work. I wish the council and the interim town manager as much good fortune in hiring the next one as Anne has been and is as a town employee and resident. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Gabbard. Ms. Berry, anyone else?
I was the last speaker.
Next item on our agenda tonight, report special committees or town officials, hand to a town manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I have several items to go over tonight, considering it's the last meeting of the year, and we have many employees to recognize, and I wanted to come out here before you. As it relates to the holiday closing, the Town of Front Row business offices will be closed Tuesday, December 24th, and Wednesday, December 25th, in observance of Christmas Eve and Christmas Day. Trash recycling for Tuesday, the 24th, will be collected on Friday, the 27th, and trash collection recycling for Wednesday, the 25th, will be collected on Thursday, the 26th. Additionally, the Town of Front Row business offices will be closed on Wednesday, January 1st, in observance of the New Year's Day. Trash and recycling collection regularly scheduled for Wednesday will be collected on Thursday, January 2nd. Christmas trees will be collected on Wednesday, January 8th, January 15th, and January 29th. Trees must be placed at the curb and free of ornaments, tinsel, stands. Trees with root bowls will not be collected. Many of you may know the Kerford Avenue safety crosswalks, the cuts have been installed, but we are going to have to close Kerford Avenue. This is an update as of today. The previous report, the weather in the holiday season, staff decided to modify the closing of Kerford. As you know, there's two raised crosswalks at Kerford Avenue for safety improvements near the skate park and the skating soccer fields. Installation of each crosswalk will take one week. Therefore, there will be a continuous road closure on Kerford Avenue between Salem Avenue and West Main. Due to weather conditions and holidays, work will begin on December 16th at 7:00 a.m. through December 20th at 3:00 p.m. And then it'll pick back up on January 6th at 7:00 a.m. through January 10th at 3:00 p.m., weather permitting. There'll be no road closures during the weekends. Motorists are asked to use caution while driving in this area and be aware of crews working in the continuous road closure. We apologize for any short-term inconvenience, but hope the citizens appreciate the added safety in this highly utilized and traveled part of town. As you know, members of council, there's a vacancy currently on council. We'll be accepting resumes from town citizens who are interested in serving on town council for an unexpired term left by Councilman Tewol when he became mayor. Applications will be accepted until 5:00 p.m. December 13th of this year. If any citizen is interested, please look at the town's website or contact Town Hall Members of council and Mr. Mayor, a few other things to talk about. I'd like to thank the Public Works Department and the Energy Department as well, as other staff and countless resident volunteers for the great job they have done decorating Main Street the gazebo. I don't know if most of you have probably gone by there. I think it just looks great. I hope all of you had the chance to see the love sign manufactured by Williams Brothers Corporation of America, right here in Warren County. I had a great conversation with the family at the tree lighting event, and I'm hoping to take a tour of their facility after the new year, and I'll let council know in case any of you would like to join me in taking a tour. It's a family-run event, and really had a great conversation with them. As you know, this is the last meeting of the year, and as of today, I've been interim town manager for exactly 30 days, and frankly, I think that we have a lot of things up and running, and we're at a sprint in many areas. For our community, 2019 will go down as perhaps one of the most memorable in the town's history for possibly all the wrong reasons, mainly the EDA scandal. I won't take time to review the year behind us. Instead, I want to shine the light on the path before us. 2020 will be a wonderful year for the Town of Front Row. You and we have target lists of goals and priorities which we are methodically going through. We have ratified an agreement with Chantel, not only allowing for competition with cable, but also, as importantly, covering the town with high-speed fiber. This is going to create a wonderful environment for our town, having that high-speed fiber throughout our community. We're attacking the I and I problem head-on, not kicking the cow down the road. We're budgeting nearly $3 million next fiscal year to make these very necessary improvements. We're going to be spending more money on paving our roads, making repairs, and taking care of needed maintenance. Plus, we have a block grant improving many aspects of our historic district. These are only a handful of all the positive things which are taking place in 2020. Mr. Mayor, if you could join me for a moment, please. You know, one of the most positive things that I believe I can do as an interim town manager is to recognize the achievements of some of our employees. You know, I've had a great experience, a great opportunity with many of our employees. I'd like to have Dwayne Mock and his family come down, if you would. Let me read to you, members of council, and Mr. Mock. Let me tell you why we're recognizing Mr. Mock tonight. Dwayne is a meter technician for the Energy Services Department. He's responsible for testing, changing out, and setting electric meters. Dwayne also goes above and beyond when speaking to customers about possible electrical or metering issues. Recently, Dwayne took it upon himself to start a project of testing meters that were identified on the zero consumption list. Many of these meters have shown zero consumption for several months, even years. Therefore, they did not raise a question. Dwayne reached out to the ladies in the billing department so that he and I...so that he and his supervisor could compile a list of zero consumption meters to be tested. Over the course of the project, Dwayne was able to test and identify several meters that had been reading zero when electricity was in fact used, resulting in lost revenue for the town. So Dwayne is not only being recognized for taking the initiative to test these meters, but the fact that, you know, we all pay a certain portion of our electricity, and if everyone's not paying for their electricity, we're paying it for them. So this is a wonderful opportunity, Dwayne. The plaque that you have before you says, "In recognition for going beyond our citizens' expectations and for meeting the highest standards of service to our community." To Dwayne Mock. Okay, Mr. Mayor, another one for you. Now, I had four employees for the month of November, and frankly, I had...well, we had total seven that we recognized, I believe, but four of them, and I wanted to give this Star of the Month award, and I just couldn't pick which one. Each one of them are being recognized for distinct and different reasons. Let me read to you a note I received from...it's about Tori Pugh. Tori, she's here. I saw her. Why don't you have your family come up, if they'd like? Thank you. So let me read to you a note that we received about Tori. This is from an office manager in our community. Says, "I took the paperwork and deposit check to the counter yesterday and had the pleasure of having Tori receive the paperwork. She told me the general process and said she would call me to update on the request. After I left, I realized I forgot to make a copy of the forms and tried calling, but when I went to voicemail, I decided to make another trip. Tori saw that I had called, returned my call, and said that she would make a copy for me. The copy is perfect because it also has work order numbers. She gave me an update on the process and called again to let me know about another step that would be necessary as we get the meter back in place. I really appreciated her customer service and friendly attitude and wanted to let you know. As an office manager, I've learned that I'll call you..." Doesn't always happen, but it definitely did with Tori. Tori, thank you so much. Congratulations. Okay, now, the next two is another great one. Ryan and James, you guys here, I saw you earlier. So here's...you have family with you? They'd like to come up? Come on. Keep us in. There you go. So let me read to you a little statement here. While town staff was on a...so let me set the stage for you. There was an issue on a sewer line, and there was a big hole dug on the street, but they decided...they discovered it was actually on the property owner's side, not the town's side. So they were still there, and while the town staff was there, they noticed the contractor, employees, private contractors, were working in a very small ditch over eight feet without any type of safety equipment, and the dirt had already been dug up recently and wasn't compacted back. Town staff told them how dangerous this was and could cause someone to get seriously injured or even worse. The contractor got very nasty with the staff, James and Ryan, and so they left. They took pictures and left. They went, notified their supervisor, their supervisor notified the director of Public Works. They notified OSHA. They arrived on the site around 5:00 p.m. They found numerous safety concerns and have instructed the plumbing contractor, the plumbing company, on what needs to be done to make the sites safe for their employees. I'll tell you why this is so special to me, is everything was done in the proper order and the proper step. These two gentlemen were trained to look out for safety violations, and they addressed the contractors in a professional way and tried to help the contractors do the right thing. Their supervisor was notified. He was trained to do the right thing, and the director was trained to do the right thing by contacting OSHA instead of brushing it under the rug. So I wanted to bring both of them down and recognize them, and it's a real privilege to have you guys here tonight. As I told you, in the Public Works Department, I really appreciate what you do, and I appreciate the fact that you did the right thing in this case. So that's the prime, performance equals excellence. That's the initiative that we just gave these flags for and the stars. We've all heard the expression, "You're only as good as the team around you." Well, that does for our government as well, and I'm...it's been a real honor mine to be able to recognize these individuals. Usually, there'll only be one star, like I mentioned, but I wasn't able to pick. I just want to wish, this is our last meeting of the year, regular meeting, I'd like to officially wish you, members of council, Mr. Mayor, and the citizens, a very Merry Christmas, and may God continue to watch over our community, guide our steps, and continually like the path before us as we do His will in the coming year. Thank you, members of council.
Do you want to have your questions for Mr. Tewol? Next item tonight is the question inquiries of council members.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have a couple of comments related to some of the public comments tonight that I wanted to address, because I like to make sure that if something's stated, that we have an opportunity to either clarify or acknowledge it. In this particular case, I wanted to address some of the comments from Ms. Gabbard. I wanted to address the TAF fees. I don't know if you had an opportunity to hear our work session last week, but in essence, I think this council agrees with you that it was moving pretty fast, and we didn't quite understand the ramifications. But thank you, thanks to Councilman... Holloway? Sorry. This is what happens when you get a lot of thoughts in your mind. Councilman Holloway, I was going to say, this guy. To this guy.
That happens when you get older, too.
Oh, yeah, it's getting there. So, you know, it took the opportunity to really dig into the code, and we realized, you know, keep in mind that we're one of the highest municipalities with TAF fees and installation costs. We did the research, the study on that, to see where we stood in the state of Virginia. And Councilman Holloway pointed out to us that, you know, in our code, we said that we actually do the installation that we have not been doing, and that's something we want to address, which in essence, you know, reduces the burden that's put on the potential new homeowner or the installation of the home. And I think with that new turn of event, that's essentially accomplished a lot of what Councilman Holloway was bringing to everyone's attention. Now, we're going to continue talking about it in the study. I agree with you again that I think the study is very expensive. I cited that. I agree with you again that I think the study is very expensive, I cited that in the work session. It's my understanding that this is something that we do every three to five years to make sure that our fees are in line, and council voted to move forward with that. But I do think that the way that council's approaching the TAF fees is in a much more conservative and a little bit slower-paced manner, as you suggested in your comments. The bond issue, that's news to me, I'm sure we'll do some more discussion on that, find out, make sure we respond to it. The, Mr. Gabbard, it's probably the first thing that you and I have agreed on, which is the act of in. Yeah, it's, I agree, it is dragging on. I think you're gonna find a lot more support with council that if that can't come to a quick resolution, you're gonna have a lot more people probably sitting in your vote on that one. It's just, it's been more of a pain than you even know. So, I did want to address the law firm, some of the statements against Mr. Teager. You know, I think the town manager is a really tough position, and whether it was Joe or Matt, I want to take the opportunity to defend some of the positions. And the law firm recommendations, so probably no different than any of you, if you find yourself in need of legal advice, you're gonna ask your friends, family members, colleagues, who would they recommend? And we had an opportunity to weigh in as council on what firms we use. I made three or four recommendations for our town attorney based on recommendations I've received in the community, people that I knew, attorneys that I knew, to be able to do this. We researched national firms to use for the town, and a lot of those firms came in at an extremely high bill allowance, so high that we felt that it'd be an enormous burden on the town. And so, when Matt made the recommendation for this law firm, and because of his relationship with the law firm, was able to have a negotiated price to make it much more affordable for us to pursue attorneys, or use attorneys in defense of the EDA in our lawsuit, this council, number one, our attorney Doug, had an opportunity to interview them, vet them out, and this council had an opportunity to discuss whether or not we wanted to use them, and, you know, decided to move forward with them. So, there's a lot of information, or a lot of details that, you know, were taking place with this council that I just wanted to clarify. Again, whether you agree with it or not, I just wanted to make sure that it was understood that it wasn't something that was forced down council to use these attorneys because of relationship that Matt may or may not have had with them. Additionally, I know we keep bringing up the LLCs or affiliations that Matt has with other companies. I think at this point, if there is an accusation in there of something that we need to investigate as a town council, I think any member of this council is open to that accusation that we will have researched and get back to with an answer. I'm not sure if there is an accusation at this point, other than affiliations that Matt has or his disclosure, which has already been vetted out by our attorney. So, council's in close mind to that, but again, I haven't heard an accusation. And I also wanted to thank Matt for his professional demeanor that he's had at every work session and public hearing. It's a very difficult spot to be in, and I think he knew that when he took the position as interim town manager. But I think that despite others' aggressive behavior, I think he's done a great job demonstrating professional demeanor in handling citizens' criticisms and/or demands for responses. So, I wanted to take that opportunity to thank Matt because I know that it is a thankless position to be in. And then my last comment is on the EDA. I will make that comment under our resolution, which is number 13 tonight, to the floor.
Anyone else?
Yes, Mr. Mayor? I just have a few things here. Mr. Teager, a few weeks ago, I requested staff to look at extending the hours of the trial service. I request to possibly add an extra hour Monday through Friday and some earlier runs for the weekends. I was wondering if we have anything to report as far as how the negotiations are going with this?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Gillespie. We do have that, we did get your request for that, as well as a letter we received, and we are having discussions with the company. And matter of fact, I had a staff meeting this morning. One of the staff members was not able to be at the staff meeting, but I plan to follow up tomorrow to find out the result.
Thank you, sir. And also, I've been seeing Mr. Teager's got some things on social media again as far as confusion with the recycling issues. Is there any way that we can send out a revised list of things that is okay for approval for the recycling?
Sure, yeah, we can do that.
Just want to clear up some of the confusion that's still going on in the community.
Yes, sir, no problem.
And I just wanted to wish all the staff and all of our citizens a Merry Christmas. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Anyone else?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, James. Anyway, Mr. Gabbard.
I wrote it down.
Yeah, oh, yeah, hey, you know what? I wrote it down, and he copied. Anyway, I think you got busted. But anyway, the fact of the tax, the reason we were trying to reduce it to begin with was because of the cost of having to go out and do the installation yourself after paying the fee. Up until 2009, the town always did the installs, and a former employee did that in house, ceased to do the installations on his own without council approval, without us changing the policy. So, that is one of the reasons why, you know, we were trying to get it lower to accommodate the builder or homeowner, whoever was doing the taps, to make up for the loss. So, you know, and the study, our study when that comes back, that's one of, it should tell us what we should be charging for our TAF fees. So, you know, I just wanted to clarify those couple of things that's one of the reasons why we're trying to lower it to begin with. And just digging around, checking into code, I mean, I never would have thought that we would have changed the policy in 2009. I was on council in 2009, and I kept thinking to myself, man, I do not remember voting on that. And so, a little digging, a little digging, and come find out it was never voted on to begin with. So, that's where we stand with that.
Can I just say just one thing, one big thing?
Sure.
I just wanted to ask you, since you're doing this study on the TAF fees, on what we should be charging. Wasn't that done before? Didn't staff bring something up and say what the TAF fees were for the surrounding counties?
That doesn't have anything to do with those.
Yeah, but I thought that they gave us something saying what all the other counties charged for TAF fees. We were writing off with the other counties, so why are we paying to do another?
That was a, that was, we asked them to do a comparison of how our fees rate to other counties. The study is gonna be something that completely evaluates the whole utilities and helps determine the fees in order to sustain, to sustain our infrastructure, to make sure that they're in line of what's being charged to individual residents.
And Ms. Gabbard, you were saying it should be pretty subtle, just do time on the terrible, and that should be the TAF fee? So, well, if you wanted to go that route, that would be great, because you'd be surprised to be a lot less than $15,000.
Anyone else? If not, next item this evening is report of the mayor. Gives me great pleasure here this evening to also recognize one of our employees, Mrs. Ann Rose, we have a plaque here for her, I'll read it, presented to Ann Rose in appreciation for your invaluable contributions as Florida College altruist to the town of Front Royal for your insight and dedication to conservation, landscaping, design. This plaque is presented with sincere gratitude from the fellow employees, the manager, mayor, and town council. Congratulations on your retirement as of June 2nd, 2008 to January 1st, 2020. Ms. Rose, are you here? Would you all like to come down with me and present this to Ms. Rose? Ms. Rose, I'd like to present this plaque to you in recognition of your hard work and all the things that you've done, and I'd like to also give you credit for all the other things that you have done for Front Royal, because I know you've done a lot of things during your tenure here. So, with that, we'd like to give you this plaque in remembrance of your employment with us. Thank you. Another thing this evening, I want to thank the Chamber of Commerce for putting on the town Christmas parade yesterday, it was very well attended, and everything really went well. I was in the front, so I didn't get to see it, so I was waving everybody and wishing everybody a Merry Christmas. Also, tonight, I want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas in their audience, those that are listening in the town of Front Royal, this town staff, and everyone else a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and hope next year will be a greater year than 2019 for the town as well as the citizens of Front Royal. Thank you, all that, thank you. That's my report here this evening. Next item tonight is consent agenda. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor? Sorry, Mr. Mayor, there's item D, six D proposals for addition, deletion of items to the agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed that. Does anyone have any additional additions? Next item tonight is consent agenda, uh, hair motion.
Mr. Mayor, I remember that we approved the consent agenda items, does it remember?
Very simple. I'm not gonna read all these this evening, there's about seven items that are pretty much standard procedure, so with that, we have a motion, a second, is it in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Has opposed, motion carried. Next item is number eight.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
We do need a roll call on the consent, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. We have a roll call, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Gillespie.
Yes.
Mr. Holloway?
Yes.
Mr. Metza?
Yes.
Mr. Seelaw?
Yes.
And Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Item A is a public hearing, Ms. Rose, could you read the summary, please?
Yes, sir. Item eight, council's requested to affirm on its first reading an amendment to budget in the amount of $11,182,627.66 for outstanding purchase orders that need to be carried forward to the 2019-20 budget cycle to complete unfinished projects. There was, no one's signed up to speak this evening.
Well, open the public hearing, is anyone here would like to speak that didn't sign up? Is anyone here? Third time, is anyone here? Public hearing is closed, go hair motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move the council firm on its first reading an amendment to the FY 2019-2020 budget in the amount of $11,182,627.66 for outstanding purchase orders to be carried forward to the FY 2019-2020 budget cycle to complete unfinished projects as presented.
So, thank you.
We have a motion on the floor that's been properly brought forward. This time, I'd like to ask, Ms. Barry, to have a roll call for this, please.
Yes.
Pardon me. We have a... Were you comments?
Okay, you have comments?
Yes.
Okay, sir.
No problem. I just wanted to clarify that it is $11 million of projects to be brought forward for the 2018-2019 budget to the 2019-2020 budget. So, every year, we have to do this. If there are projects that are carrying over into the next year, then we have to have a public hearing and declare the dollars with each project heading on what's carrying over to the next year. So, certainly if there's any questions, council will be available to answer those, but that's the proposed motion.
Anyone else? If not, Ms. Barry, can I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Gillespie?
Yes.
Mr. Holloway?
Yes.
Mr. Metza?
Yes.
Mr. Seelaw?
Yes.
And Ms. Thompson?
Yes, thank you.
Motion carried. Next item tonight is enough public hearing, Ms. Barry, could you read the caption?
Yes, sir. Number nine, on September 9th, council adopted an amendment to the town code pertaining to utility account payments and termination of service and in effect to decrease the town's bad debt on utility accounts. It's come to the attention of staff that some commercial users have no ability to provide a personal guarantee without a legal liability challenge. It's also identified that the commercial users are not included in the town's acceptable credit history waiver of utility deposit. Therefore, council's requested to affirm on its first reading an ordinance to remove section 134-71A-1E pertaining to the personal guarantee for business entities in its entirety and to remove the word residential in service location deposit waiver to allow commercial service locations to be included in the waiver of deposits. We do have one speaker signed up this evening.
Ms. Barry, open the public hearing, please.
Mr. Gabbard.
Call Gabbard, 1221 Valley Drive. I just, I just need a clarification, does this mean that if someone opens up a business in Front Royal, that they don't have to put a deposit? That's what it means?
So, Mr. Manager, would you explain that to us?
Yeah. BJ, you can, sure?
Yes, so, the deposit would be required, only if the deposit would be waived if a good letter of credit or principal was shown, meaning that they had good credit with the town or a good duty to the old, otherwise the deposit would be due.
Okay. That's it, that's my question, thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers this evening? Any other speakers? Anyone else? Public hearing is closed, and I have a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move the council firm on its first reading an ordinance to remove the town code section 134-71A-1E pertaining to personal gratuity for business entities in its entirety and to remove the word residential in service location deposit waiver to allow commercial service locations to be included in the waiver of deposits as presented.
Second. We have a motion, second, is any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. So, this proposed motion is coming back because council, in an effort to help reduce our bad debt, you know, created a new code that we found out after the fact became overly burdensome on certain businesses, commercial entities, and we had multiple complaints that was creating such burdens. So, this is our attempt to rectify that situation, as BJ explained tonight, allowing for a letter of proof of good credit or the deposit to help satisfy the requirements. And the work that both our finance department and council moving to adjust our code, Mr. Teager, at work session last week, I think you quoted a percentage that our bad debt on default accounts is down to about 3%, 2%?
Three tenths of 1%, so we collect 99.7% of our...
I mean, that's phenomenal, that's phenomenal work, and a far cry where we were, you know, five, 10 years ago. So, again, this is a re-modification, we do not want this to become overly onerous on business owners or residential homeowners, but we do want to make sure that we are protecting the town's utilities and not being left holding a complete responsibility for the financial obligations.
Anyone else?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. This goes back a long time to resolve this bad debt thing and in cleaning up the ordinances. If you go back to 7A, we were instrumental in removing, we got a lot of speakers standing to say, "Why are we writing off a million dollars?" We were writing off after five years rather than understanding where our bad debts were on a quarterly basis. So, this was just another effort in cleaning up that ordinance, so I hope you understand that.
Anyone else? Ms. Barry, could I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Gillespie?
Yes.
Mr. Holloway?
Yes.
Mr. Metza?
Yes.
Mr. Seelaw?
Yes.
And Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Motion carried. Next item is item T, Ms. Barry? Motion carried. Next item is item T. Ms. Barry?
Council's requested to adopt an ordinance for the vacation of an unapproved alley located between 303 and 311 Brown, as requested from Donnie Atkins. The preamble is contingent upon utility easements and a hold harmless agreement effective post fence of this install.
Do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move the council adopt an ordinance to vacate an unapproved alley that is 12 feet 5 inches by 107 feet located between 303 and 311 Brown Avenue, contingent upon required utility easements and sign hold harmless agreement if a fence is installed.
Second.
Do I have a motion? Second, any discussion? Not Ms. Barry, could I have a roll call?
Council Gillespie.
Yes.
Councilman Holloway.
Yes.
Councilman Metza.
Yes.
Councilman Seelaw.
Yes.
And Councilman Holloway.
Yes. Thank you.
Next item tonight is item 11. Ms. Barry, could you read the caption, please?
Sure. Council's requested to approve the following items to be added to the liaison committee agenda items, excuse me, agenda scheduled for January 16th. Number one, a review of the liaison committee mission statement and policies, the boundary adjustment request from Chris Ramsey, lighted and derelict structures program, a data center, working together regarding the EDA civil suit, resolution to the general assembly to allow the town to establish its own EDA separate from the existing EDA, and the update on the Happy Creek Road project.
Do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that council approve the following items to be added to the liaison committee meeting agenda for January 16th, 2020. One, review liaison committee mission statement policies. Two, boundary adjustment request from Chris Ramsey. Three, lighted and derelict property, excuse me, derelict structures program. Four, data center. Five, working together regarding the EDA civil suit. Six, resolution to general assembly to allow towns established own EDA separate from existing EDA. And seven, update on Happy Creek Road project.
Second.
Do I have a motion? Second, any discussion? Ms. Barry, could I have a roll call?
Mr. Gillespie.
Yes.
Mr. Holloway.
Yes.
Mr. Metza.
Yes.
Mr. Seelaw.
Yes.
And Ms. Thompson.
Yes. Thank you.
Next item is item 12 on our agenda. Ms. Barry, could you read the caption, please?
Council's requested to approve the STANTEC consulting services to conduct a comprehensive water and sewer utility rate study in the amount of $45,000.
Do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move the council approve STANTEC Consulting Services Incorporated to conduct a comprehensive water and sewer utility cost and services fee in rate study in the amount of $45,000.
Second.
Do I have a motion? Second, is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I have a question for Mr. Teedrick. Is the $45,000 paid out of the general fund for the study, or is it paid out of our enterprise funds?
Enterprise fund.
Okay. I think that's an important distinction as well. It's part of our enterprise business that we're doing an evaluation on our rates. So, this, this will come out of the cost of operating our enterprise funds.
Anyone else? Ms. Barry, could you have a roll call, please?
Mr. Gillespie.
Yes.
Mr. Holloway.
Yes.
Mr. Metza.
Yes.
Mr. Seelaw.
Yes.
And Ms. Thompson.
Yes. Thank you.
Okay, next item is item 13. Ms. Barry, could you read the caption, please?
Council's requested to approve a resolution requesting the general assembly to allow the town to establish its own EDA separate and independent from the existing EDA. Upon approval, council requests the town attorney to send it to the appropriate individuals.
Do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move the council approve a resolution requesting the general assembly to allow the town of Front Royal to establish its own economic development authority, EDA, separate and independent from the existing EDA, and to have the town attorney send it to the appropriate individuals upon approval.
Second. Do I have a motion? Second, any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Couple, couple comments on this. So, first and foremost, what we're doing is approving a resolution to request the ability to establish our own EDA if we so desire to do so. Here's the thing, our current EDA, you can make an easy argument that it is ineffective, and it's going to be very difficult to operate through that EDA, at least for the next coming year, possible years. The general assembly is going to get together starting in January, and we wanted to make sure that our request went through on essentially hedging our bets, that if our EDA becomes ineffective as a joint town and county operation, then the town has the ability to establish its own EDA so that we can continue moving forward town projects, especially related to property acquisitions and developments. So, that's not to say that this town is moving to establish its own EDA. There's still a lot of work that needs to be done, and there's still some of the, the legal work that needs to come to fruition. But if we miss it now, if we miss the request now, we won't be able to establish that and get approval until July of 2021. So, we wanted to get the ball rolling on this so that we had the option and the ability to continue development within the town if needed.
Anyone else?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to address the council and our citizens about this resolution tonight that asks the general assembly to establish an economic development authority for EDA for the town of Front Royal. The purpose of an EDA or IDA is to bring economic development to a community where it is authorized. It is also important to give existing businesses a tool to help them compete and stay profitable. Please keep in mind, just because we are asking the general assembly to authorize Front Royal to have an EDA, does not necessarily mean we're going to launch into it. Once authorized, we can commence the process to determine if it's in the best interest of our citizens and community. We need good-paying jobs in our community that persons can raise a family with. We have several business parks in Front Royal that need development. For the most part, the infrastructure is already there. We just need someone that can market our town by being able to go to Richmond or wherever needed to get this accomplished. In my opinion, the town of Front Royal totally stopped partially funding the EDA was as bad as crazy as swapping the town hall for the Afton Inn. We basically gave up all our interest in the everyday operations to include appointing members to the board, a voice in making decisions that affect the daily operations, and to also feel the town is second fiddle to bringing development to our community. In my opinion, the current EDA is insolvent. I don't see a way to get it back to solvency, of course. This is not my area of expertise, but looking at it as a citizen, it's time to throw in the towel and start looking for ways to get economic development going for our town. If the general assembly accepts our request, we will work very diligently to put safeguards in place to make sure that this will never happen to our community again. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Second. Anyone else?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Sorry, one more comment. I think this was brought up by Ms. Gabbard as well. Have no, or, or, Mr. Gabbard, have no interest in duplicating efforts and creating more cost. I think I said a couple public hearings ago that this is our community, county, and town. In any, any area that we're able to consolidate resources, I think is in the best interest of our, our town citizens. And so, ideally, that's what I'd like to see happen.
Anyone? Ms. Barry, roll call, please.
Mr. Gillespie.
Yes.
Mr. Holloway.
Yes.
Mr. Metza.
Yes.
Mr. Seelaw.
Yes.
Ms. Thompson.
Yes. Thank you.
To conclude our agenda this evening, I air motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Your second. All in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed. Those are carried. Thank you, Eric, everybody for coming out this evening. Have a happy Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.